For meeting to order, and Councilmember Kathy White will lead us in a prayer. Our invocation.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, please give us wisdom and guide our decision-making process this evening, so that all that we do is acceptable to you as our loving God. Please watch over our residents and their families as we look ahead to Thanksgiving and the many blessings that you have bestowed upon us. Bless all the first responders, military personnel, and essential workers in our city as they work to keep us safe in these challenging times. Amen.
Thank you very much, Councilmember White. Good evening, and welcome to the 1,908th regular meeting of Livonia City Council. This is a voting meeting, and minutes of this meeting will be approved at the next regular meeting scheduled to be held on Monday, November 16, 2020. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember White?
Here.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yeah.
Councilmember Donavick?
Here.
Councilmember Jolly?
Present, Livonia, Michigan.
Oh, thank you for that reminder.
Back up. Sorry, back up. Turn all over. Councilmember White?
And may I just interject, Susan? This is to be consistent with the Governor's Executive Order that allows the continuation of council and public meetings of all sorts via remote, but every participant must address, must announce his or her city, county, and state location. Is that correct, Mr. Burnier?
That is correct, but it's under the legislation that was passed by the legislature and signed by the government.
Thank you. We're no longer operating. Thank you for that reminder, under the Governor's Executive Order. All right. Madam Clerk, sorry, but would you please take the roll again, and we'll ask the council members to announce their city, county, and state location where they are right now.
Councilmember White?
Present in Livonia, Michigan, Wayne County, State of Michigan.
Councilmember McCullough?
Present, Livonia, Michigan, Wayne County.
Councilmember Donavick?
Present, Middle East.
Councilmember Jolly?
Present, Livonia, Wayne County, Michigan.
Councilmember Toy?
Here, Livonia, Wayne County, Michigan.
Vice President Barr?
Here, in Livonia, Michigan.
President McIntyre?
Here, in Livonia, Michigan, and the County of Michigan. Thank you. So we have all members of the council with us this evening. And just a reminder, Councilmember Donavick is exempted from having to state his exact location because he is deployed on active military duty. So, thank you. At this time, we would like, we'll have the presentation of the minutes from the 1,907th regular meeting of the City Council that was held on October 19, 2020, which seems like it was a lifetime ago. Um, council.
Madam President, I'll move approval.
Uh, move by Barr?
Second.
Support from Jolly. Are there any corrections or comments on the minutes? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you please take the vote on approval of the minutes of the October 19 meeting?
Councilmember White? Aye. Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick? Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye, and the minutes are approved unanimously. Uh, at this time, we go to the council for personal announcements, tributes, or recognition. I'm going to ask Mr. Jolly, Councilmember Jolly, to start, because I believe you have the list of our city retirees.
I do, thank you, Madam President. Uh, there was one retiree from the city of Livonia for the month of October. That's Keith Bessonin, who had served 21 years in the Department of Public Works. Uh, we wish Keith well, and we thank him for his service, especially this time of the year when we see our DPW workers out and about, working as hard as they do, and going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Best wishes to Keith. And before I go back to the council, I'd just like to cover a few items. We have new data on item number, agenda item number 13 this evening. I'll refer to that when we get to item 13. We'll be removing item 16 as it's a duplicate item. And I'd like to announce one public hearing for Monday, November 23, 2020, and this is on a brownfield project. So, I'll go back to council if anyone has any personal announcements, tributes or recognitions they'd like to make this evening. All right, seeing none. At this time, I have the pleasure of introducing our department heads, and again, it's difficult to go in any kind of normal order because of how people appear on the screen. I'll begin with Paul Burnier, our standing city attorney. We're delighted to have Mayor Brosnan with us this evening. We have Todd Zalinsik, our city engineer. We have Mark Tiramina, our Director of Planning and Economic Development. We have Sarah Kastrovich, our manager and administrator of the council office, and I'd like to take this opportunity to wish Sarah a very, very happy birthday, and I'm glad that we could be with you to celebrate your birthday with you this evening. Uh, we have our exceptional clerk, Susan Nash. We have LaShawn Thomas, our Director of Legislative Affairs. I see that we have Casey O'Neil, our Information Systems Director, upon whom we all rely for many things. And I'm going to look over at the attendees. I may need help if I can't see one. We have a fire chief, David Havner, with us this evening. We have Jacob Roche-Law, our superintendent from DPW. The treasurer, Linda Shield, with us. Let me see. And does anyone, or is aware of anyone that I've missed, any of our department heads? All right. The only announcement that I have is to thank our city clerk and our entire clerks' department, and all of the other people from City Hall from many, many departments who stepped up to help the clerk's office navigate what is an election unlike any other for a lot of reasons. And Susan, I know you're exhausted, but if you could maybe just tell us how many absentee ballots or early ballots we had, and if you'd rather defer that to the next meeting to give us the full readout, that would be fine, but I just want, you know, maybe to tell us what it was this, what it was yesterday compared to a normal election.
Thank you. Um, yesterday, we counted 42,747 absentee ballots, and 21,047 people went to the polls yesterday. That represents, in some ways, a flip. In the past, it would have been the number of 42,000 at the polls with 21,000 in absentee. So it did make it more challenging. We did have, we did experience high voter turnout at City Hall over the last probably 10 days. In some ways, City Hall was Election Day every day. We had anywhere from 500 to 800 people coming in. My staff worked very hard, and as you pointed out, we couldn't have done it without other departments and people coming to help us. We were as busy as we could to issue the ballots, but this way, we had other people that could run ballots out to the residents. We got considerable amount of appreciation and thanks and compliments on how it worked. As crowded as it was, we kept people going, and we tried to respect people's time as best we could, but we were busy, and people wanted to come out and exercise their right, which was wonderful, and Livonia showed their true colors in the last few weeks of a very committed community, and I'm very proud to be part of it. I'm proud to be part of the clerks' team and to be part, and thank you to everyone. Thank you to Mayor Brosnan and council for all your support. And we had a wonderful auction yesterday, very few hiccups. There's always going to be some. We were done scanning by 6:00 AM, 5:00 AM this morning. So just to kind of give an idea, in August, we did 22,000 absentee ballots and finished scanning at 1:00 in the morning with four scanners. Yesterday, we finished 42,000 with six scanners by 5:00, 5:30, 6:00. So the new equipment did help a lot. Thank you.
Councilmember Toy, I'm sorry.
I just wanted, I know Councilmember Toy wants to speak, but before I, or I just wanted to add a few more comments. First of all, question, do we have the unofficial results posted yet?
They are on our website. I want to say, I think I sent them to Casey O'Neil around 8:00 this morning, and then around 8:10, I sent him a text, "Please put this up," because I was getting a lot of phone calls. We had sent to the county, but the county wasn't reporting out the numbers at that point, so I wanted to get them up for residents and candidates to be able to see the turnout yesterday.
Thank you. So, and those are still the unofficial results, correct, until they're certified by the county?
They will be unofficial until the canvas completes, and that's in approximately two weeks.
But you can check, anyone who's interested can check the city website for the unofficial totals, and I just want to make another comment about your team. I was able to come in Tuesday for a few hours to volunteer at the kiosk, come in to help direct people, and you and I worked together there with one of our reserve officers. And every time I had a question, Susan, or, you know, something that I wasn't sure about, and I had to pop back to your, to the clerk's area, and everyone was, I mean, just piled with work. You could see it physically, and you could feel it, you could feel it figuratively. There wasn't one snappish answer, there wasn't one person who didn't know an answer. The teamwork was phenomenal, and that comes from, that comes from outstanding leadership. And, and I mean, you have a fantastic team, but it was clear that everybody was on the same page, and the same with the volunteers. So I don't think you can say enough for a job, a job well done. And the other thing that I do want the residents of the city to know is how hard the clerk and her team works to find every available grant, get us the equipment we need to pay our election workers. If there's a grant out there to be had to secure training, our clerk's office is on it, and that's above and beyond just exceptionally high workload of elections. So thank you.
Well, thank you.
Councilwoman Toy?
Thank you very much, Madam President and Madam Clerk. Outstanding job for you, your team, and others that helped. Couple questions, if I may. Could you explain the AV ballots in regards to the fact that we can't open them until a certain time? Many states across our country have different laws, and a lot of people asked why your AV ballot couldn't be counted early. I, people don't understand the process sometimes. Could you clarify that? Then I have one other question.
Sure. All 50 states in the United States have the ability to have their own election laws. And in Michigan, our, up until this year, our election laws, we could not start processing an absentee ballot until the polls opened at 7:00 AM on Election Day. This year, we were given the opportunity to do some pre-processing, and that was on Monday, and it was a limited time, it was a time certain, that we could start doing some things with the absentee ballots, checking them off. If clerks chose to, could open, but leave the ballots inside the secrecy sleeve and kind of move on and get it ready, so this way, on Tuesday morning, you would be ready to go. I chose, we did do some pre-processing, but I chose not to open. We got them all checked off, we confirmed the list, and we had them all ready, which is a huge project with ballots of that amount. And so we were ready by yesterday morning, the first ballot was going through before 8:30 AM, where in August, the first ballot didn't go through till about 10:15. So, an hour and 15 minutes does make a big difference when you're spread out over six counting boards. I will, I'd like to point out that we did the chain of command and the security of the ballots were utmost importance to us here in the city of Livonia. So the ballots stayed at City Hall until 10:00, where was the time that they had to be there available in case anyone wanted to come in and spoil. Then at 10:00, they were shrink-wrapped and loaded onto a truck with a police escort driven over to the senior center where we were processing them, and at all times, there was a police guard there making sure that the ballots were secure at all times.
Excellent, thank you. Uh, it's a long process, and I don't think a lot of people realize all that goes into it. Lastly, if I may, um, I had several calls today about Sharpies, and did their vote count? And I said, "Well, if you have real questions, you call the clerk, but as far as I know, your vote counted, so don't worry. We wouldn't do anything to harm your vote." So, um, could you clarify that a little bit too, Suzy?
Sure.
Yeah.
Um, unfortunately, people do get confused, information gets out there and then does lead to confusion. And first, our ballots are tested, and the machines are tested with ballots that are used Sharpies on them. And the reason for a Sharpie or a flare pen at a precinct is the tabulators are an optical scanner, and ballpoint pens, as we all know, depending on what happens, you could have a ink blob. And that ink blob then can smear and then cause more problems going down. That's why it's okay they can be used for absentee, because it has plenty of time to dry. The Sharpie or a flare does dry quicker, so we do use what is recommended. In fact, our pens were supplied at, by the state. It was recommended by the manufacturer and the state. And just looking at the totals, just to kind of just ease people's minds, if all these ballots that we had, all these pens out there, didn't work, then we wouldn't have had 21,000 votes count at the precincts yesterday when 21,000 people went to the poll. So they do work, they are fine, and the bleed-through concept does not affect anything. The ballots, when you're lined up, you've got like the ovals, they're never lined up on the other side where if it bled through, it would cause a problem on a race on the other side or a ballot initiative. So this is all taken care of, these are all things that we are, do know, and unfortunately, some confusion today, and I hope that people now, their minds are at ease.
Well, thank you very much, Madam Clerk, and thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Uh, does anyone else have any questions for the clerk or comments? All right, seeing none, we'll move ahead with the agenda. At this time, we go to audience communication. We set aside 30 minutes at the beginning of each meeting for audience communication, and I'm going, and anyone who does not have the opportunity to speak during the first 30 minutes has an opportunity, will have an opportunity to stay on the meeting and speak to, address the council during the audience communication that follows the agenda. And at this time, as we always do, I'm going to ask our parliamentarian, Kathy White, to please read the rules for audience communication.
Thank you. Members of the public audience at the meeting shall not speak until they are recognized by the chair. Each person recognized by the chair to address the council shall identify himself or herself by name, and if appropriate, group affiliation. A person addressing council on an item on the agenda shall be limited to two minutes, unless the period of time is extended by a majority of the council present, and shall be recognized to speak prior to council's consideration of the item. There will be an audience communication section of not more than 30 minutes duration at the beginning of all council regular and study meetings where citizens may address the council. And as you indicated, there is also an audience communication section at the end of all regular and study council meetings where citizens may address council on any matter that is not on the agenda of that meeting. Citizens who wish to expand upon their remarks will be asked to reduce the matter to writing and submit it to the city clerk, and such item may be placed on a future council study session for further consideration. A person addressing council under the audience communication portion of the agenda will be limited to a total of three minutes at each study or regular meeting unless the period of time is extended by a majority of the council present. A citizen may address the council once during audience communication. If the citizen has addressed the council during the first audience communication period at the beginning of the meeting, the citizen will not be permitted to address the council again during any audience communication period at the end of the meeting. Anyone addressing the council shall make responsible comments. Personal, impertinent, slanderous, or profane remarks are not permitted, and anyone causing a breach of the peace may be removed from the council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember White. It is now September 19, so we will go to audience communication. If there's anyone who's joined us on Zoom or via phone, and you can hit, I always, I think it's, is it star nine? I should have this right in front of me. Uh, star nine to be called on if you, if you're joining us by phone. So, audience, is there anyone from the audience that would like to address the, would like to address the council during audience communication? I don't see anyone, so I believe we'll move ahead with our agenda, and I did miss two department heads. Mr. David Varga, our Director of Administrative Services, and Ms. Denise Mayer, our Director of Human Resources. So with that, we go on to reports from the mayor and other city officials. I believe Mr. Davis was going to present a thank you letter from Greenmead. I don't know if Mr. Davis is on the line. Mr. Davis is our Director of Parks, Recreation, and Other Community Services. Mayor, do you know if, if?
I don't believe that he's on today.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
All right, well, we will certainly invite him at the next meeting to share the thank you letter if he would still like to.
Thank you.
With that, we move on to the consent agenda. Items one through eight are listed on the consent agenda, they're voted on, excuse me, as one item. Uh, it does not mean that they are, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Jolly?
I was, I was just going to make a motion for the consent agenda.
Oh, I, I was, okay, sorry, I didn't get something to say before the consent agenda. Anyway, items one through eight are listed on the consent agenda, they'll be voted on as one item. It does not mean that they were any less important than any other items on the agenda, but during our, our study meeting of October 19, they were determined not to be controversial in nature. Counsel, Mr. Jolly?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, thank you.
Thank you. Support from Councilmember Toy. Um, Madam Clerk, would you please take the vote on approval of the consent agenda, please?
Councilmember White? Aye. Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye, and the consent agenda is approved, and my apologies, we need to, do need to circle back to reports from the mayor and other city officials, I missed a page, and we do have, we do have two reports. The first, communication from the Department of Finance dated October 9, 2020, regarding various financial statements for the city of Livonia for the month ending August 31, 2020. It is respectfully suggested that this item be received and placed on file for the information of the council. And B is a communication from the Department of Finance dated October 9, 2020, forwarding the quarterly investment report for the city of Livonia as of August 31, 2020, and it is also respects, respectfully suggested that that item be received and placed on file for the information of the council. And with that, we move on to our regular agenda, beginning with item number nine, which was, it was a report. Now I have to flip back and find.
What about the mayor?
I'm sorry.
What about, did you need a report from the mayor? I'm sorry.
No, no, I just, I had, I had.
I thought you announced it, okay.
No, I'm sorry, I said, it's under depart, communication from the mayor and other departments.
Okay. No problem, I'll give my report.
And item number nine is a report out on our committee of the whole meeting that took place on October 12, 2020, and like all of our meetings, it was via Zoom. The, we had all, the council, and we also had Mayor Brosnan, our city treasurer, Linda Shield, our city clerk, Susan Nash, our city attorney, Paul Burnier, Director of Administration, Dave Varga, and our Director of Legislative Affairs, Ms. LaShawn Thomas with us. And the item taken up, the first item taken up by the committee of the whole was pertaining to debate 2-20, and this was resolved by Council Vice President Scott Barr, seconded by Councilmember Kathy White at the regular meeting held September 21, 2020 regarding the organizational restructuring of the city council office. The council did hereby refer the item to the committee of the whole for its report and recommendation. And during our, our committee meeting, we outlined the legislative director position, the council administrator position that had been provided to us by the mayor's office with input from human relations and discussion with the council. And we had a discussion on a number of the topics, how this should be achieved through ordinances, outlining or designating that the council administrator would be a civil service employee, that the governmental affairs director would work out of the fourth-floor mayor's office in service of liaison to city council, that ZBA administration responsibilities would move back to the council office with the ZBA administrator moving over to the council office with cross-training and backup between the ZBA and the council administrator. And we had, we had recommendations out of that meeting, but we are going to cover those recommendations in following agenda items. So I don't know if there are any questions or, or comments on the report out? All right, item, item 9B was, was a subject of the Legislative Affairs Director to the Committee of the Whole, and this was actually an item that had been in committee since 2011, and the council decided to take no further action on this and move it out of the committee. So that's my, that's my report. And, I'm sorry, my apologies, I have to get back to, I have to get back to my paperwork. All right, so as I mentioned, we had, we had resolutions out of the meeting, and we're going to cover those with the next three items of unfinished business. And we will begin with item number 10, and this is a proposed amendment to Livonia Code of Ordinances, is amended. This is, was drafted for us by the Department of Law to add Chapter 9, Department of Governmental Affairs, of Title II, to create and establish a department responsible for supporting the city of Livonia's governmental agenda.
Madam President?
Uh, yes, Vice President Barr?
I will offer first reading on this item.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Barr has offered first reading. Uh, Councilmember White?
Support. Oh, I'm sorry, that was first reading, sorry.
Thank you. Thank you.
I appreciate it anyway.
And the item number 11, also under unfinished business, is a proposed amendment to Livonia Code of Ordinances, is amended. This too is drafted for us by the Department of Law to amend Sections 010, 020, and 030 of Chapter 2.10. This was the Department of the Office of the City Council, to Title II, to establish the responsibilities of the administration in the city council office.
Madam President?
Uh, yes, Vice President Barr?
I'll offer first reading on this as well.
All right, thank you, Vice President Barr. And then number 12 is the proposed, proposed amendment to Livonia Code of Ordinances. This was drafted by the Department of Law to amend Sections 020 and 030 of Chapter 2.10, the Department of Legislative Affairs, to Title II, to establish the responsibilities of the Director of Legislative Affairs and the Administrator in the City Council Office.
Madam President?
Yes?
I'd like to offer first reading in regards to that.
You'd like to offer first reading on that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, uh, thank you, Mr. Jolly. And with that, we move on to item number 13. This is a rezoning petition. This comes to us from the Planning Commission regarding Petition 2020-07-01-04, submitted by the Adams Park Development LLC to rezone the properties at 14416 Harrison Avenue and 2820 Linden Avenue. This is the former Adams Elementary School site located on the south side of Linden Avenue between Inkster and Middle Belt Roads in the southeast quarter of Section 24 from PL Public Lands to R1, two-one family residential. And the public hearing is held on October 7, 2020, and we have new data, which now I have to find in my stack. I probably shuffled my papers around here, and I'm looking for my new data, which I know is right in front of me, and I'm failing to put my hands on it. I will, I will tell you what the, what the new data is. A communication from Debra LaRote dated October 8, 2020 be received and placed on file for the information of the council, and a communication from Stuart Michelson, Adams Department, Adams Park Development LLC, October 27, 2020, to be received and placed on file for the information of the council. And again, my apologies, I know the new data is here, and I'm failing to put my hands on it. Which I will look at the, at the end of the meeting and refer back, and if anyone has any questions before. And if anyone has any questions before proceeding, I can take the time and find the, the new data, which I've simply moved out of my line of sight. Council?
Madam President?
Ah, yes, Councilmember Jolly.
I'd like to offer an approving resolution for this matter.
Support.
If I may, Madam President?
Yes, please.
We had an opportunity to review this matter at a public hearing. At that time, a site plan, well, a potential site plan was proposed as the rezoning of the property was discussed. We had offered motions at that time for moving ahead with an R1 zoning and also an R2 zoning. Two different motions were made. At this time, I think it's appropriate to proceed with the R1 with the understanding that, that I believe the new data that you referred to earlier was a new site plan that was proposed and was provided to the city, which offered great improvements and incorporated both R1 lots and R2 lots into the site plan. I'll note that almost every single suggestion of the council at the public hearing was incorporated into the new site plan. And quite frankly, I think it's one of the best residential site plans that we've had come before us in my time on council. I'll also note that I had an opportunity to speak to the developer via email. He gave me some addresses of other developments in the area. I had an opportunity to visit their Riverwalk Development that's in Farmington at approximately 8 Mile and Farmington Road, and it is a very nice development. But with the site plan that they're proposing here in Livonia, I suspect that ours will be even better at the Adams site. So I'm happy to offer the R1 at this time, and I'm very happy about what has transpired since the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Barr?
Yeah, I, I just want to note, because I suspect, I recognize some names, that we have some people in the audience on this item. And Councilman Jolly knows this, but for the benefit of the people watching, the, the site plan will come later. This is just zoning tonight. So I, I concur with what Jim said about the site plan that came through, but I just want to make it clear that it's, is part of the process. We'll still be handling the site plan separately from this once the zoning is completed. Thanks.
Thank you for pointing that out, Vice President Barr. Councilmember Toy?
Thank you, Madam President. I, I just, if I may to go to Mr. Zalinski about any water issues in that area. When I spoke with some residents over there, they were concerned about the water and the runoff, et cetera. Do you have any concerns in that regard, sir?
You're discussing stormwater. Obviously, engineering will get the site plan for review and approval. So I assume detention will be provided in the area itself, then obviously detained, restricted and outletted to a known source, whatever, closed system itself. But I don't have issues with that. Obviously, like I said, a thin development, we want to make sure it's up to, up to snuff and to the standards, and I look forward to reviewing that at the appropriate time.
And I wanted to ask that because obviously I was asked that. I knew most residents of the area, and, you know, furthermore, they can wait till the site plan, but, you know, your question, I think, was pretty, you know, current and needed an answer. So that's why they felt that they did have some issues with water as it pertained to current kinds of happenings. So I wanted to pay particular attention to that as we move forward. And has been said by others, an excellent improvement on this site plan. I would only hope that as we review others in the future, that we can make them as good as this one has been. And thank you to the developers as well for their cooperation. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Toy. And I did find that the new data, which I simply had underneath my agenda, Sarah had put it all together, and I just didn't see it. And I'll just, I'll just recap what it was. And I mentioned this in summary, but the first was a submission by Stuart Michelson, the Adams Park Development Director, and it was simply laying out the response to a number, their response in the, in the planning for the development in response to the many items that were brought up at the public hearing. And the second, as I mentioned, was a communication from Debbie LaRoe, who's on Harrison, adjacent on the west side across from where the development will be. And she did not, she was not able, and I apologize for this, Ms. LaRoe, if you're on, that she was not, that the star, the star nine function did not work for her, so my apologies. So she, she sent email outlining her concerns, and they were traffic, the correct property ownership issue, the additional parking for duly parked, water retention, basin flooding, power overloading concerns, and that was it. So thank you. All right, we, I have a, we have a motion offered. I don't know if anyone else on council would like to speak before I go to the audience. It looks like we do have a, someone who'd like to address the council on this issue. Anyone else from council have anything? All right, with that, we'll go to the audience, and it looks like we have Atul Kishore. Good evening, Atul.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great, thank you. Thank you for giving me the chance to speak. I wanted to confirm the discussion that Ms. Toy had with Todd Zalinski that the problem that I had brought up earlier was not relating to the property, but it's relating to the flooding of Linden on, in front of the subject property that we're talking about. That result, that has been discussed several times with Todd and escalated up, but it has had no conclusion on there, and there is a major problem on Linden because right now it's a little bit of a less of a problem, but the geese are, are making that a pond on Linden, and traffic is being stopped. Although it doesn't affect the property that is being discussed on the agenda, but this needs to be resolved immediately. There is a major problem with the roads sinking on Linden, and with these trucks going in for the construction, this needs to be resolved before the construction starts. And this is on, I'm, I'm talking about behalf of Bishop Condominium HOA, so all of us are involved in this decision-making.
Okay. Thank you for those comments, Mr. Kishore. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Sean Kelly? Are you able to, you should be able to?
I unmute it, thank you, guys.
We can hear you now.
Okay, good. First of all, I'd like to count, thank Councilwoman Toy for coming out last night and speaking to me. I appreciated that. My big concern is, as the last speaker talked about, is Linden and the flooding. And I understand there's a very large drain going under Linden that does the stormwater drain for this whole development. And I'm wondering, has anybody looked at that drain that's under Linden to see if maybe there's blockage or something in there? And that why it's not handling the current overflow? And now we're going to add all this additional super, or infrastructure onto it? Has anybody looked at that drain under Linden?
Thank you for raising that issue, Mr. Kelly. And we will be happy to speak with the administration and have a response for you on that question. Anything else? All right, thank you, Mr. Kelly. And then we will go to Jim McCabe. And you should be able to unmute yourself, Mr. McCabe. There we go.
Yep, am I good?
Mr. McCabe?
Yes. I also would like to thank Councilwoman Toy for, for visiting. She does seem to be interested in the project and our concerns, they're, they're with. My friend, Mr. Kelly, already mentioned the drainage, that's already been a topic. Now, I don't know if this is the form, again, pardon my civics knowledge. I know we're talking about zoning, but drainage and traffic are issues. I have an issue with sewage. I mean, I don't want sewage backing up in my house. I mean, since the house has been here for 64 years, it's been, it's been okay, but will that be affected? Again, I don't know if this is the form. I'm also concerned about streetlights. I'd hate to have a little Chicago, you know, 100 yards from my, my front door. And then retention pond, I know it was mentioned by one of the civil engineers that this is, you know, it's going to be all new. Well, it may be all new, but a retention pond mosquito haven, I'm sure. So that's, that's a concern for me. The sewage, again, we're in a smack dab in the middle of a 64-year-old neighborhood, and you put 39 homes, I just, you're going to have to tap into the old system somewhere. So there's going to be some type of effect on sewage, water mains and such. Those are my concerns. Also, the new site plan, I do have a copy of it, I believe, and it still has 39 homes. Is that still, is that, do I have the latest and greatest? Says still R1, 39 homes, is that still the, the idea?
Yes, that, I believe that's correct.
Okay.
Madam President?
Yes?
Just to clarify, the latest one I saw is 39 homes, zoned R1, but there were a number of lots, including all of them, that were adjacent to Lion Street that are actually R2 widths. So it's zoned R1, but the site plan that they showed us, which we'll be reviewing later, has a number of wider lots.
Thank you. Did you hear that, Mr. McCabe?
I did, that's helpful, thank you, yeah.
All right, anything else? And, and you are correct that this is the rezoning, but we're happy to hear your concerns that go to the development of the site as well. We are focused on rezoning, but we're happy to hear your, your comments.
Yeah, well, those are my comments, and those are my concerns. I do appreciate everyone listening and giving me the, the opportunity here. And I guess, will there be another time that we could talk more about like streetlights and, and things of that nature after the rezoning?
Yes, it'll come back. It will not proceed, after, after the first reading that we have offered here, there will be nothing that will come back to council until we go through the site plan approval process. And that will start with the planning, that will start with the planning, the planning department and the planning commission.
I see, okay. Yeah, thank you very much.
All right, and I, I see that Mr. Kelly has his hand up again. I, I don't believe that Mr. Kelly used his entire two minutes, so I'll go back to Mr. Kelly. There we go, Mr. Kelly? Let's see, Mr. Kelly, are you able to unmute?
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Sure can.
Okay. You just brought up about the sites along Lions are now proposed to be the width of R2, but they're still going to be designated as R1. Does that mean? Can they then change it after we approve, you approve, R1 designation for all lots? Can they then put them back to R1, not R2?
Mr. Jolly? I, I don't know if Mr. Jolly wants to address that.
I do, and, and this kind of goes to a larger point here. So the first reading pushes the rezoning along to the second phase. It would need a second reading before we would ultimately vote on it to approve it. It's been the tradition and the practice of the City of Livonia to hold up the second reading of the rezoning to be voted on at the same time as the approval, or the potential approval that is, of a site plan. Once the site plan is approved, that indicates and kind of outlines and dictates going forward the sizes of the lots. So any changes would not and could not be made after that point if it was approved. And ultimately, the zoning would not be approved unless the site plan was approved as well, if that makes sense.
Is that clear, Mr. Kelly? Does that answer?
Yes, and thank you for that clarification, Mr. Jolly.
Thank you. All right, I don't see anyone else in the audience or on council who would like to speak. So we have a, we have a first read offered on that. And now, as Mr. Jolly correctly pointed out, Councilman Jolly, we will have no further action on that until we have the site plan. All right, with that, we move on to item number 14. This is a proposed amendment to the Livonia Code of Ordinances. This is prepared by the Department of Law. This is petition 2020-07-03-03 submitted by Stonefield Engineering and Design. On behalf of Hagerty Square LLC, request to vacate a section of the existing public utility easement located on the east side of Hagerty Road between 7 Mile and 8 Mile Road.
Madam President?
Yes, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry to interrupt here. The city attorney and the city clerk are both trying to get your attention, ma'am.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that wasn't the first read, that was a, approved resolution and support, so you need a vote.
I, I'm sorry, Mr. Bernier, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry, there needs to be a vote taken by the council to send that to the law department to propose the resolution.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're, you're, you're absolutely right. This is the, this is always the issue of meetings after, after an election day, and I know we have no right to complain. The clerk on the, we have the clerk on the, he's been up for, you know, 100 hours straight. So we had, this is Resolution A, which would refer to law, preparation for an ordinance to be R1, but, but with a site plan, the expectation of a site plan that not all the lots will be R1 size. All right. And we had, we had an approval, we had approval, a resolution for approval offered by?
I'll give you one if you need a call.
Jolly and then Toy, correct?
Vice President Barr was support, I believe.
Okay, Jolly and Barr. All right, if there are no further questions, then we will take the, I would ask Madam Clerk to please go ahead and take the vote on the referral for the law for preparation of R1 ordinance.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yes.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye. So Resolution A is approved. This will be referred to the law for preparation, rezoning to R1, and then it will come back to council for a, for a first read. Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Bernier, and thank you, Clerk, for pointing out that we had to have a vote before we get to the first read on it. All right, moving ahead with item number 14 is a proposed amendment to Livonia Code of Ordinances. This is prepared by the Department of Law regarding petition 2020-07-03-03 submitted by Stonefield Engineering and Design on behalf of Hagerty Square LLC. This is a request to vacate a section of the existing public utility easement located on the east side of Hagerty Road between 7 Mile and 8 Mile Roads, 19700 and 19750 Hagerty Road in the southwest quarter of Section 6, and this was Council Resolution 270-20. Council?
Madam President, I'll offer an approving resolution.
I think we need a first read, Mr. Jolly.
I'm sorry, I'll offer a first reading.
All right, we have first read offered by Councilmember Jolly. All right, thank you. With that, we move on to item 15. This is a block party request. This comes to us from Katie Adams to be held on Sunday, November 21st, 2020, from 8:30 a.m. to 10:30 a.m. on Dover Street between Parent and Hees with no rain date requested. I don't know if we have the petitioner this evening, council?
Sub move.
Moved by Toy?
Second.
Support from Councilmember Jolly.
Madam President?
Ah, yes, Vice President Barr?
I just have a question about this. It says it's on Dover Street from Parent to Hees. And I'm looking on the map, and I don't see how that's possible. Parent and Hees aren't even really that close to each other. I'm just unclear as to where this is supposed to be held.
Since we don't have, since we don't have the petitioner here, I guess we could, Mr. Bernier, am I correct, we could have a substitute motion to table this?
We could have a substitute motion. I was trying to look at the locations myself, and I guess I don't, can't figure it out.
Madam President, I, I don't know that we have a meeting before this.
Yes, we do. We have a meeting on November, oh, I'm sorry. Don't we? No, I think we, we do, on the, oh my gosh. I just, I just read the.
I could be wrong.
Yeah, we, we have a meeting two weeks from Monday, from this past Monday.
That's correct.
November 16th?
November 16th.
I apologize.
Madam President, I, I don't want to be nitpicky. I just, this one, I'm just totally confused as to where this is even supposed to take place. So I think it's important that we get that nailed down, we're going to be approving this.
Does anyone want to offer a substitute? Uh, does anyone want to offer a substitute, uh, Councilmember Toy?
I, I can withdraw my motion, uh, for now, and that'd make it easier if my supporter would do that as well.
I will, um.
Okay. So, this will remain, uh, with the motion withdrawn, this will simply remain on the agenda for new business, correct, Mr. Burnier?
You, you broke up with the, I couldn't hear what you said.
I'm sorry, so, um, the maker withdrew her motion and Councilmember Jolly withdrew the support, so then this simply remains on the agenda, correct?
Correct, yes, if you do a substitute motion to, to put your, to put it on the next meeting, is that what I'm hearing?
Uh, Mr. Jolly?
I would, just looking at this, is, would it be appropriate for somebody from, in City Hall to reach out to this person to try and clarify a little bit beforehand? Because looking at this, they may not even need to block off the streets in the way that they're intending here.
We can do that.
Yeah.
All right, so now we need a, um, now we need a, uh, a motion, correct, Mr. Burnier, to put this on the, uh, agenda of November sixteen? I'm, I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
I, actually, this should actually, the ter, determination of this should be made by the parliamentarian, but it's my understanding that, uh, if you do a substitute motion to adjourn the, the matter, uh, to the next meeting, that that would be appropriate.
I'll make that motion, Madam President.
Does our parliamentarian agree? We don't have many of these, that's why we're all, uh, a little bit here. All right, um, so, Mr. Jolly?
Support it, Madam.
Has made the motion to table this until the next meeting and have it on the agenda of the next meeting, correct? That, that's the, and we have support from Councilmember Toy.
Yeah.
Motion? All right, seeing none?
Madam President?
Uh, yes, Vice President Barr?
I, I was just going to note, I, I assume that this person's been notified, but this is the second straight meeting that this person hasn't shown up, and so whoever's appropriate to reach out, I don't know if that's our office, or, let's, let's just make sure that we specifically call them and tell them they need to be here.
Our, our office will reach out and, and express.
Thanks.
From us, thank you. All right, any other discussion? All right, um, Madam Clerk, would you please, uh, take the vote on the substitute resolution?
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye, and the substitute resolution is approved, so our office will reach out to the petitioner, um, to tell her what the concern is and advise her that she needs to be at, at the next regular meeting in order for this to, to be considered and, uh, voted out for approval. All right, uh, with that, we move on to new business, beginning with item number sixteen, supposed to be a request to approve an interlocal agreement, this came to us from the Office of the Mayor, this was removed from the agenda because it's a duplicate of consent item, uh, of the consent agenda, item number five. So, with that, we move on to, um, and, and back on the previous, um, Ms. Casperwich just confirmed that the petitioner was notified of both meetings and advised that she needed to be present. Number seventeen is a request to modify union membership and amend the name of the union, uh, this comes from the Civil Service Department, to include the three police captains and amend the union name to the Livonia Command Officers Association. Council?
Sub move.
White, move.
I'll support, then, if Ms. Toy has made the motion, I'll support.
Toy and White, Toy made the motion, Councilmember White, uh, supported. Does anyone, uh, Mayor, or, uh, Ms. Mayor, does anyone want to discuss this? Uh, does council have any questions? Anyone from the audience have any comments or questions? Seeing none, we can move ahead then, Madam Clerk, if you would please, uh, take the vote.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yes.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye, and the motion carries and the union membership and the, uh, name of the union will be amended, as stated. For eighteen is a request to approve the Livonia Firefighters Union, LFFU, contract to permit for the period of December first, twenty eighteen, through November thirtieth, twenty twenty one, comes to us from the Civil Service Department, council. Uh, Councilmember Jolly?
Madam President, I'd like to offer an approving resolution.
Port?
Port from Vice President Barr? Any discussion?
That was, that was not for me.
Oh, I'm sorry, who was that from? Uh, Donavick. My apologies. Uh, Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Chair, um, uh, council, just, uh, before you take your final vote on this, I just wanted to offer just a couple comments, uh, because the significance of approving a, uh, contract for one of our public safety divisions, it is, is significant, um, not only this evening, but at any point in time that you pass, um, a collective bargaining agreement. You know, since January, we have been, uh, negotiating with all three of our public safety, uh, contracts, and it has been my top concern, uh, upon taking office. Livonia residents, they've been very clear about the fact that they really greatly value the service of both their police department and their fire department. They're concerned about the shortage of police officers and firefighters that we have, and they understand that a big part of that is because we haven't been as competitive as we need to be, um, in terms of our, our package that we're offering to police officers and firefighters. So, um, you know, I, I, I don't like for anything to lag a long period of time, and I certainly wish that this had moved faster than it did, um, but clearly recognizing that we were operating, um, with a couple constraints. One, we're doing something that we've never, very rarely done in the history of Livonia, and that is negotiating all three collective bargaining contracts with our, uh, public safety unions at the same time, um, that's a difficult thing. Secondarily, we got hit with COVID, um, which, you know, if you're trying to negotiate a contract, that face-to-face interaction is really imperative, uh, but we did push through, and I commend the negotiating team, along with the firefighters' union, for the work that they put into, uh, making those negotiation talks continue in spite of, uh, those kinds of roadblocks. A lot of credit, uh, for the successful negotiation of this contract goes to the negotiating team, uh, to Denise, to Denise Mayer, to Greg Schultz, to Chief Hevner, um, they're all, along with Mike Slater, integral, uh, to our ability to successfully negotiate a contract like this. But on the other side of the table was the Livonia Firefighters Union, and, uh, Nathan Lee and his team of negotiators were stellar, they were really fantastic to work with. I think everybody came to the table trying hard to get to a point where we were doing two things, where we knew that we were able to put a contract together that was going to help us to retain firefighters and help us recruit firefighters. We are currently eight firefighters short, and just to show you, uh, the impact of the negotiation, um, we have five firefighters, just as a result of hearing that this contract was in the works and in its final stages of negotiation, um, upon your approval, waiting for your approval, there are five firefighters that are slated, uh, to begin in the fire department, that are on their way to being, um, accepted as members of the firefighting team in Livonia. We also have four or five firefighters that in November, um, are going to begin the process of filling vacancies on the force as well. So, um, I think there's been already a great deal of success that has come as a result of the negotiation that went into this contract, um, and it is really, your vote tonight is going to secure our ability to continue to recruit and retain so that we have the very best force in the region. So, I really do look forward to your support this evening. I want to thank you for the time that you took, uh, in our closed committee, the whole meeting, to dive into the intricacies of the contract, to really understand it. Uh, we took some time that evening to explore and explain all of the elements of the contract with you, and, uh, you came right along in your understanding of what it was that we were trying to do in negotiating this contract. So, thank you for the time that you spent with us, thank you for the, you know, for your support, uh, of the firefighters as we engaged in this contract. We've known all along, um, that we had the city council's backing in making sure that we were able to offer, um, our firefighters a competitive package, uh, so I wish to thank you for that, and I really do look forward to your support in this this evening. Uh, Chief Hevner is in the audience, uh, so if, uh, Chief, if you don't mind, uh, sharing with the council just a little bit of the feedback that you've already gotten as a result of the civil service, uh, passing this, and, uh, some of the conversation and chatter that's happened, uh, throughout the community as a result of the contract in, in its final phase, I think that would be helpful to the council as well.
Chief, uh, let's see. Are you there?
I am.
Okay.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mayor, and a special thanks to the, the mayor, the negotiating team, the union, and of course, all of you on council. Everything that the, the mayor has just presented to you is, is very accurate. The feedback that we've received so far in the firefighter community is very positive, and, uh, we have seen months and months of difficulties in attracting, uh, qualified employees to, to come be a part of the Livonia Fire Department for many different reasons, uh, industry-wide, and the changes that have been put forward in this contract have really made a positive impact in the ability for the city of Livonia to attract and retain quality, high-quality, uh, firefighters for years to come. So, it, it definitely is a move that we have seen to be, uh, not only very much needed, but very well-accepted, both internally and externally. And, uh, with these changes and your support, um, I, I truly believe that the, that the Livonia Fire Department is on a fantastic path to move forward and make sure that we, that we provide the highest quality of, of service to our residents. So, this is definitely, this contract is definitely a win for the department, uh, the, the city management and the community as a whole overall. So, um, I, I really do look forward to, uh, to having everybody's support on this and really appreciate everybody's time and effort, uh, into this entire negotiating process.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, Councilmember McCullough?
Thank you, Madam President, I just, just like to take a quick moment and, uh, uh, give kudos to all that was involved in this, I know it was a long process, especially as the, as say, of everything that was going on with, uh, COVID. This is a, a pretty monumental vote and something I'm really happy to, uh, be in support of. I definitely think that this is much needed, uh, we have some of the best public safety around, and, um, you know, being a part of giving them tools and a solution to retain our employees is key, so, uh, again, kudos to everyone involved, and, uh, this is a, this is a great, uh, hopefully a great day, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McCullough. Uh, Councilmember Toy?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and, um, a special thanks goes out to not only the fire department, but hearing bits and pieces of negotiation, I know that Mayor Brosnan, you, you kept your foot on the pedal, and, uh, you made a lot of this happen as well, so thank you very much for your leadership as well. And I also wanted to thank the fire department, in firsthand experience, many times, uh, calling nine-one-one, for many of my ill family members, they've obviously been very professional, very quick, and very understanding of all kinds of situations, and kudos to you for that, uh, Chief and others on the department, and I can only see better and better and good things coming from the department with this kind of, um, forward movement, both, uh, in the recognition of them as well as the work they do for our great community. Thank you again to all that were part of this team, appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Toy, uh, anyone else?
Madam President?
Uh, yes, Vice President Barr?
So, appreciate all the comments, but I'd like to take a few minutes to talk about this, because I actually am going to be voting no on this tonight, and I'd like to explain in detail why, because this is a really critical issue. And I just want to say at the outset that nothing that I'm going to say here is going to be, is going to be new, um, is a, a big topic, um, it's been a big topic in the community for at least a couple of years, and talked about it many times, including with our union leadership with the firefighters, so I know, none, nothing I'm going to say here is new to them either. I, I absolutely agree with the problem that we have with recruitment, that we've had with recruitment and retention, and, um, as I've stated multiple times, think, think it was definitely one of the top priorities coming into this year, um, so I, I agree with all that, we've had a shrinking candidate pool, um, as has been mentioned, we've been losing some officers, some police officers as well, but firefighters in this case to surrounding communities with more attractive compensation packages, yes, many of which, um, includes some form of defined benefit plan, which is, which is the key element of, of this contract that we're talking about here, is reinstituting a pension, um, for the firefighters. And, and, and so recognizing that, just like, just like any business, um, it's important that when, when we're not competing, that we figure out how to compete, and that means increasing the compensation one way or another, and I'm one hundred percent in favor of that. But there's three levers we have to pull with doing that, we've got wages we can work with, we've got defined contribution matches we can work with, or in this, or, or there's, there's the pension option. And as I've said many times before, I, I'm very, very interested in talking about two of those, I'm, I'm not nearly as interested in talking about the third, and the reason is not, um, not just from a city perspective, it's, it's actually from an employee perspective. I, there, there's no such thing as a guaranteed investment, and that includes pensions. Uh, we've, we've seen that, we saw that with the Detroit bankruptcy, with what happened there, I, I just feel as a principle that it is wiser to pay employees in full now instead of paying them some now with a promise to pay later. And I am open to discussing what that formula of wages and employee match needs to be in order to persuade our employees that a defined contribution plan is in all of our best interest. I, I think it was wise roughly twenty years ago, when we went to a defined contribution plan, part of the reason our existing pension plan is as healthy as it is, is because we made that move, it's enabled us to fulfill those obligations for the people that were on that at the time, and I am not interested, as, as a guardian of taxpayer dollars, I'm not interested in recommitting our taxpayers to future liabilities, that will be the responsibility of future generations to me. And as much as I've, every time I report out on a finance committee meeting, you hear me say how much I love and respect the way this city handles its finances, and that's all sincere, and yet, even I, I, I don't trust, I, I don't have that level of trust in any, uh, organization forty, fifty, sixty years from now, um, to, to, to be signing up for liabilities that are going to be paid, paid out in, into that timeframe. I, and, and on that note, I mean, it's, again, it's not just from our perspective, I don't want to be subjecting our first responders to the uncertainty of what future administrations might do with that money, I just think it's best for all parties involved to compensate fully now. And so, just, and I, I don't want to just say what I think is wrong with this as an alternative, and I alluded to this earlier, um, I think, I think we could be more creative with how we compensate within a defined contribution plan, and just as a quick comparison, and I want our residents to understand this, and I'm going to be very transparent here just to make, make a point, um, in, in my current job, where I have a 401K, just like many of us in private sector jobs do, in my particular company, I get a three percent match on my contributions to that, with an opportunity based on certain conditions that may be going as high as six. So, in short, if I invest six percent, I get, and, and the company invests six percent, and then of course I can invest anything beyond that if I want. In, in the company where I spent most of my career, just as another comparison, at Fiat Chrysler, if I put in ten percent, the company matched eight percent, and that was considered a really, really good plan. Livonia currently requires five percent from the employee and then matches with twelve percent, that is a phenomenal defined contribution plan, and yet, as phenomenal as that is, we're not competing. And I said in our committee meeting, and I've talked since then with some, including the mayor, where I've suggested, I'd be willing, after we dug into these numbers, I think we could boost that contribution from the city as good as it is now, I think we could boost it by several percentage points, and, which, which would make it even a sweeter deal. But I haven't sensed, I, I, I haven't seen any interest from the administration to explore that further. I, listen, I, for, I, I have utmost respect for our firefighters, I enjoy a good relationship with them, as I said, this explanation that I've just given is the exact same explanation that I've given to them in direct conversations on this topic when we talked about it a year and a half to two years ago. I'm very proud to say that even though I differ on a final solution with this, um, the union leadership has expressed appreciation for my willingness to listen to them and engage in an honest dialogue on this, I, I, we, we all share an understanding of the problem. I just, I just don't think this is in the best interest of our firefighters, of our city, or future generations in our city to be going this route. It's, this, this is, this contract overall, and, and we're not going into the details of it tonight, we went into that in our committee meeting, um, this contract is a great contract in many, many ways. meeting. This contract is a great contract in many, many ways, and I've expressed that. I think there's a lot of really impressive things for both sides in this contract. But, but for all these reasons, again, just, just not, what we're doing here is we are signing up future generations with liabilities to pay off this contract. And, and that's not something that I'm interested in supporting. And our work today should be paid appropriately, and we got to figure out what that is in order to, to attract and retain. So I, it's, it seems pretty clear I'm in the minority on this, but I want to just state that for the record as, as to why, why I won't be supporting this tonight. It's not because I don't recognize the problem. It's that I just differ on the why of the wisdom of the solution. And in closing, I just want to reiterate again, obviously, a huge thank you to our firefighters for their service to our community. I, I've appreciated, you know, Nathan Lee, the head of the union, I've appreciated a relationship with him where we've been able to speak openly and honestly and respectfully with each other on this, even when we have differing views on how to proceed. And I look forward to continuing to work with, with him, with our firefighters, and of course, with our city to provide the highest level of public safety to our citizens. So, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Jolly.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll just say that, you know, for the record, I'm in support of this. This solves a problem that we have struggled with for many years, going back at least a decade, if not longer, where this really became apparent that this was something that we needed to deal with. Many of us came into council in 2015 and hit the ground running in regards to at least understanding, exploring what the options were in regards to this. And I'm finally happy to be a part of getting this over the hump to move forward so that we can make improvements in other areas and not always have this be the hangup. Just note for the record as well, the finance department in the city was involved in this as well. With their financial understanding and their knowledge, they gave the go-ahead that this did make sense financially for the city currently and going into the future. And really also, you know, I, I always respect Scott's opinions, but in regards to this, you know, I think there's something special about the collective bargaining process. There's something special that goes into two sides coming to a table together, understanding what their own best interests and what they bring to the table, and hashing through those issues and hashing through an understanding and coming up in the, in agreement that makes sense for everybody. And only then, and when, once that happens, does city council get involved, and the contract that has been agreed upon by the parties comes before us to receive our, our approval on behalf of the residents of the city. With everything I know and all the details in the contract and understanding the process, I'm happy to do that. I congratulate Mayor Brosnan, Nate Lee, firefighters, the city administration. They've really done a hell of a job, and it's commendable, and I look forward to moving forward from this point on. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing none and seeing no one from the audience. Madam Clerk, would you please go ahead and take the vote on the new contract agreement for, again, for the period it's retroactive of December 1st, 2018 through November 30th, 2021.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yes.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Uh, Councilmember Toy, you're muted.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Aye.
Vice President Barr?
No.
President McIntyre?
Aye. And the, the motion carries. Thank you. Item number 19 is a acceptance of grant of easement. This comes from the Department of Law, secured without monetary consideration from Comfort Care Senior Living for a public utility easement in connection with the sanitary sewer constructed at 34020 Plymouth Road in the southwest, southeast quarter of Section 28. It's parcel ID number 46-112-I9-0023-004. Move by Toy?
Support.
Support from McCullough. Any discussion? Seeing none and seeing no discussion from the audience, I would ask the Madam Clerk if you would please take the vote.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye. And the, the motion carries and we have acceptance of the grant of easement. And we do not need to ask for a motion to suspend the rules. And at this time, we go back to audience communication. If there's anyone in the audience who did not communicate with council, beginning of the meeting, who'd like to bring the council's attention, any item or issue not on the evening's agenda? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Stop move. Support.
Support from Barr?
Madam President, I think someone just put their hand up.
Oh, okay.
If you want to go.
Let me see. I'm trying to see who has their hands up. Dina. All right, Dina, good evening.
Hi, good evening. I was just actually just checking in to see if there was anything going on with the Planned Parenthood protests. If there was any resolution to anything with the ordinances, the noise ordinances, or any of the side ordinances.
I'm not aware of any updates. Vice President Barr?
Oh, I was getting ready to say something, but I didn't realize I had. You must have read my mind.
I can tell you were ready to say something.
I have a question related to that, and then I actually have a question for Dina. Forgive my short memory, but I know we, I believe Councilman Jolly maybe had asked the law department to do review of that. Did we ever get that back? Are we still waiting on that? I guess I threw the chair to Paul, if he doesn't mind, she didn't mind.
No, I, as I talked at the last meeting, we are working on that. Clearly, given the First Amendment implications on us, we are, we want to make sure whatever we do is done correctly in the right way on it. I know the issue is in front of the traffic commission on the signs. I have been involved in it. Mr. Zelinski's on it. I think it was tabled to the next meeting, if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken, as to the parking. The parking consideration is being looked at from a safety perspective, and it has very little to nothing to do with the First Amendment issues and the speech. It has to do with safety concerns is why the traffic commission is looking at it. But we are looking at the possible ordinance changes or tweaks to the ordinances that might change, but we have to be very careful on the First Amendment grounds. So it's not one that we are necessarily rushing into, but we are giving a lot of concern.
Thanks for refreshing my memory on that. And then the other thing is, Dina, if you wouldn't mind, you can find my contact information on the city website. If you wouldn't mind just give me a call at your convenience, I'd like to chat with you a little bit about this. So, thank you.
And then I had actually one more question too, which is not regarding any of that stuff, but we live, I mean, I'm sure all of you know Coventry Gardens is super wooded, lots and lots of trees. I was just wondering, is there any possible way that we could maybe be, or who I would speak to, to where we could be either first on the list for the leaves to come get picked up? Because if anybody drives through here, I mean, our leaves are crazy here. And when they do come and pick them up, if they're technically not all the way on the street, they don't pick those up if they're still on our grass. But if we push them all the way out to the street, there is literally no room for cars to get through. So I was just wondering, who would we contact or try to get through to see if we could maybe get our leaves either picked up one more time instead of just two times, maybe three times, or maybe, you know, kind of October instead of the second week of November?
Dina?
Yep.
Thank you for your question. Actually, when I was out at polling places yesterday, I had a number of residents ask me similar questions.
Oh, okay.
The, the, the short answer is, this is, the schedule is made by, by DPW, the Department of Public Works. It is, it is, and I'm, and thank you for bringing it up. And I actually suggested to several of the people that talked to me that they mention it at a city council meeting because that's a very good way for both the administration and council to hear the concerns. It is an incredibly complex schedule, and we have a lot of wooded, we have a lot of wooded areas and subdivisions and developments in Livonia. The other issue that we're up against with the timing is the same equipment that we use to do the leaf pickup. Those are the same trucks that are, that are retrofitted for, for snow removal. And if you recall, it's not unusual. We had a, we had a large snowfall last year in November. So if we have trucks that are configured to pick up leaves, then we don't have sufficient trucks to do snow plowing. And we recognize that, that the way we do things creates a suboptimal situation for neighborhoods like yours and, and a number of others as well. I will tell you that we are, we are probably one of the few, or at least it's not a majority of cities that do offer leaf pickup. And there are a lot of constraints, but I appreciate that you brought it up, and we will be happy to refer this to the administration and to DPW and ask them to let us know if, if there's any way that the schedule could be tweaked. But it's, it's very complicated, and it is, we're 36 square miles, and Todd, what's the 300 miles of city-controlled roads?
373, almost.
373. So it is complex, but thank you very much for your question, and we, we, many of us empathize with your situation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thanks for taking the time to call in.
Thanks.
Next, we'll go to John. Good evening, John, and we'll ask, please, if you'd give us your full name and your address.
Yes, it's John Trumbull, T-R-U-M-B-U-L-L, and I live at 33448 Rayburn Street. I'm just calling to support Dina and the residents frustration with what's been happening on the corner of our street and with the parking situation and with the safety concerns. This has been going on for two years and, and from what I've gathered, has been ignored by Livonia City Council, the Police Department, and the Prosecuting Attorney's Office. Is there anything that's going to be done to give us peace and tranquility in our neighborhood? We are tax-paying residents, and we vote. Is there anything you guys are going to do to better our lives after, you know, what's been going on on the corner?
I will, I will take the initial step responding to that. I don't know if you were on the, the whole call or the, heard the entire conversation, but this matter has been referred to law, and law is working on ordinances. There was a meeting of the traffic, on the no parking signs, there was disagreement, so that was tabled, and it is extremely difficult, where, well, everyone empathizes and feels for you. It is an extremely difficult situation because of the First Amendment rights of the protesters. And it's,
Thank you.
It's not, excuse me, it's not that the city does not want to step up to it. You, I think you, you may have heard Mr. Bernier. If you didn't, our law department is working very hard on this, but it is very difficult to come up with, with, with ordinances that protect the, that, that, that help, that, that provide, that provide relief to the residents in that area, but protect the First Amendment rights of those who wish to protest. And if you don't do it correctly, you end up in court, you end up getting, you get sued for First Amendment violations.
Yep.
And you lose.
No, I understand that, but, you know, we can sue as well. So it goes both ways. And, and I would, I'd just like to, can I finish? I didn't interrupt you. What, what we've been under the last couple of years here has been unbelievable. It's truly been unbelievable. There is safety concerns, there, there, there are noise concerns, they're, they're violating our children with signs. It's gone on. Don't we have any rights ourselves? If we don't, fair enough. We'll just, you know, we'll just find another avenue, but we should also have rights. I mean, I don't understand why this has been going on. And why did you guys allow something like that into a residential neighborhood? You must have approved it. I've, I've listened to a lot of your meetings.
John, excuse me, I'm, I'm going to interrupt you now, and I'm going to explain. We, we did not approve it, and we did not allow it. And this was the subject of, I don't know how many meetings, how many hours of audience communication, how many hours of phone calls to all of us, how many emails, both pro and cons, scathing emails and phone calls. And just so you understand why we allowed it, we didn't allow it. The state statute requires municipalities to treat any provider of abortion services or Planned Parenthood, even if, whether or not, regardless of what services they provide, requires us to treat it like any other medical facility. And if a Planned Parenthood facility meets the, all the requirements that a medical facility would have to meet with respect to zoning and health ordinances and everything else, we can do nothing to stop them from coming in to any location. And so we did not allow them. The state, and again, we're right back to the, to the First Amendment issues. If council took extra legal action, which many urged us to, and to tell them they couldn't come here, the city ends up in litigation, and the case law is very, very clear. We lose, and we pay a lot of money, and we still don't keep, you know, we, at the end of the day, we have no ability to regulate that. And furthermore, you do have rights. You have rights as citizens. The protesters are required to follow ordinances, and to say that the police have ignored it is false. The police have been out, I, I, I don't even know how many dozens of times, dozens and dozens. And no matter what they do, and, and they have, they have written some tickets, they speak to the protesters to ensure compliance with the ordinances, and both, both sides end up angry at the police. So this is, you know, this is a very, very difficult issue, and everyone wishes that we could provide you with some sort of statutory, oh, that's really state, state makes statutes, but sometime of, some, some type of ordinance relief or law enforcement relief. We, we have not found the ability to do so. We're working very hard on that.
How about sound ordinances? And thank you for unmuting me. You know what? And, and let me reiterate, there are ordinances out there to protect us citizens, but none of them have been executed. Now, the police have ticketed some of these protesters, but yet that hasn't gone anywhere either.
John, excuse me.
That hasn't gone anywhere either. And why hasn't the prosecuting attorney?
Okay, I muted you again because I asked you if I could interject. And the way this works is I run the meeting, and, and we're listening to you. We have nothing to do with the prosecuting attorney. If, if you want to complain to the prosecuting attorney, then you need to call the Wayne County Prosecutor's Office. We have no jurisdiction over the Wayne County protester. And when you say nothing is done, but you acknowledge that tickets have been written, things have been done.
Thank you for unmuting me again. No, you're right. Tickets have been written, but they haven't been, been implemented. And I don't understand that. I, I don't, it makes no sense to me. We are peaceful residents who pay taxes and we vote. You understand that. So why would you ignore us? And I have called the police, and they've never showed up multiple times.
Well, if you are, if you're suggesting that the police don't call when you show up, then I would suggest that you take that up with the mayor's office.
Or, or I can take it up with the state attorney, right?
Well, the Police Department works for the mayor. They don't work for the state attorney. So you're, I mean, you're more than welcome to pursue whatever
I know.
that you think is going to be most productive. I don't know if anyone else on council would like to address John's concerns. All right. Anything else, John? I, I assume that you have some time left. Is that correct, Councilmember White? I'm sorry. You're muted.
Yes, probably about 30 seconds.
You have 30 seconds left of your three minutes, John. If there's anything else you'd like to add, we'd be happy to listen to it.
Am I unmuted? I don't know.
Yeah, you are unmuted.
Oh, okay. No, no, thank you very much for your time. That's all I wanted to express, and thank you for listening to me. I greatly appreciate it.
Thank you. Well, we appreciate your calling in. We're always interested to hear what our residents have to say, and when it's appropriate, we'd like to explain what the limitations are of, of how a municipality is able to respond to things. But thank you, and we, all of us empathize with you. Anyone else? From audience communication, three, two, one. All right, we're done with audience communication. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Support.
Support from Support from Barr? All right, and I think we can safely show seven on that. And with that, we are adjourned at 8:30. We will reconvene at 8:40 for the study meeting. Good night, and thank you to the mayor for joining us this evening.